Good evening and welcome to the November 12, 2012 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. Please now join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now on this observance of Veterans Day, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And now Bernice Richard will read the district's mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evident by continuing education, pursuing their career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you. Now the next item on our agenda and the first item in our board packet is Exhibit A on page one. This is a board celebration regarding the Metropolitan Opera HD program in our schools. And for some background information, do we have a representative here?
Martha Cruz. Martha and Terry are two great music teachers in our school district.
Well, welcome and thank you for being here.
Martha Cruz is also the president of the State Educator Association, Music Educator Association. Will you hit that button Martha, please? Thanks.
Terry's going to help pass out some of the educator guides that came from the Metropolitan Opera. I will need these back, but I thought you might like to look at them while I'm talking. And I'm delighted to be here tonight to celebrate the live in our schools program through the generosity of the Metropolitan Opera. Joining me is Terry Brant, who's the vocal director at Hoover Middle School in Waterloo. Terry and I took students to the first broadcast in the series La Licera de More on October 13th. Two of the fifth grade teachers from Lou Henry, Julie Fee and Jerry Dirks, along with Brian Ortmann, our principal, took 42 students to attend the live broadcast from the Met at College Square Theater. For all the students and most of the adults, this was their first experience with opera. Our students behaved in a really exemplary manner and they all enjoyed the experience. Subtitles didn't work quite properly during the first half of the broadcast, but they stuck with it and they understood what was happening on stage even though the opera was sung in Italian. I asked some of the students, my fifth grade students, to write persuasive pieces about why students should attend opera broadcasts. Persuasive writing is one of the language arts skills that they teach in fifth grade and this seemed like a natural extension. So here are just a few other short examples written by fifth grade students at Lou Henry. Adina writes, "The opera is a learning experience. Isn't that what school is all about? I think kids should be able to go on one as a field trip. Yeah, maybe not kindergartners or younger kids, but fourth and fifth graders need that experience in their life. Right now, it is a once-in-a-lifetime chance. Let's make it a normal thing, maybe once or twice a school year. Why have kids wait until middle school or high school when they can do it now? Going to plays or museums is a normal thing to do, so let's make going to the opera a normal thing too. We can do field trips for different subjects like social studies, so let's make music one of those subjects. If kids' lives are filled with math equations, let's be filled with melodies. What I'm saying is let us have the opportunity to be able to go to operas." And again, this is persuasive writing that they're trying to persuade somebody to their viewpoint. Hannah says, "If you go to see an opera, you might have a new experience. The opera was a blast. When I first got there, it was not that fun, but when the room got dark and they started to sing, I was really into it. They were singing in a different language, so you would really have to pay attention. Some of the opera was funny, some of it was romantic. The funny part was when he was drinking the love potion because he thought it didn't work. By the end, the person who sold it to him told he would get all the ladies and he would become rich. He did get all the ladies and he got rich because his uncle passed away and gave him a big fortune. So whenever you go to an opera, you have to pay attention to get what it's about. So when you go to an opera, it might be a different language. So why kids should go to an opera is because it's a learning experience if you've never been to an opera. Just to say it was funny and romantic, so next time you go to an opera, go and get a good experience." Erin says, "I really like the opera. I think that everyone should get to go. It was very different in many ways. One reason I thought it was different was because of the language. The language was Italian, which I don't know how to speak. Thank goodness there were subtitles. Another reason I thought it was different was the setting. The setting was different because of what they wore and where they lived. All of the dresses were not like what we would wear today. Also, they wore them all day, every day. As for us, we wear dresses only on special occasions and don't wear them while we're working. Another reason I think other students should go is because of the learning experience. It is a good learning experience because you get to learn new types of music that some of us students haven't got to experience before. I think that all fifth and fourth graders should get to go. I also think it would be fun for students to experience and learn about." And finally Gina says, "The opera was a learning experience. Also, it was a new experience because it was in Italian and a different type of music that I'm not used to hearing. The reason I went to the opera in the first place was because it was a new, interesting thing to learn about and we fifth graders were the only people at Lou Henry were chosen who were chosen and got invited to go to the Metropolitan Opera. La Licera de More opera was romantic and a little funny to the audience. The setting did change its place because we saw it in the movie theater and actually acted out in person in New York. I would recommend this opera to anyone who likes funny, romantic, and likes to learn about a different experience." For the next, uh, let's see, forgot where I was talking. For the next broadcast on October 27th, Andrea Hohmann brought four of her students from Lowell and Laura Height, Mary Jo Mallon, and Brenda Little brought students from Central Middle School to see the broadcast of Otello, which is based on Shakespeare's play. We also have tickets to attend IEDA on December 15th and Hoover is working to bring some students again and if we have some tickets left, Central has already spoken for those. The remaining broadcast in the series for which we have tickets is Giulio Cesare on April 17th, based on Julius Caesar. And that's incidentally done with a Bollywood-style background. Sounds like a really interesting production. The Met does provide us with extensive curriculum guides as you've seen and I brought some copies although I'll need to have them back to share with the teachers. At this point, most of the teachers who have been involved have been music teachers and we've approached opera from the musical standpoint. However, there are lots of applications to language arts and social studies and other curricular areas that we are eager to explore. These curricular connections are what will make the program even stronger and more effective. And Terry, is there anything that you want to add at this point since you took students too?
No, just that the kids loved it. To a kid, they loved it. They thought it was wonderful. They can't wait to go again.
One of our teachers, Julie Fee, is already making plans to go see Rigoletto in February taking her husband for Valentine's Day present and Brian Ortmann was very excited to go with us and anxious to take Sharice to go see the opera. While I'm here, I want to thank the school district and the Board of Education for your support of the music program in Waterloo. I'd also like to take just a minute to acknowledge the achievements of some of our high school students at this point if I can. They've been chosen to participate in the All-State Ensembles this weekend. As I'm finishing up my term as President of Idol Music Educators, at the end of All-State Conference, it'll be my turn to preside at that event, at the concert this year. And I'm very proud to represent the Waterloo School District in this way and I especially want to thank my building principal, Brian Ortmann, for his support during my term. The Waterloo students who are members of the All-State Ensembles this year are Josh Pickett, who is a French horn player from East High. From West High, the students are Megan Brosh in the percussion section, Maya Buchanan on flute, Meredith Durban on clarinet, Erin O'Leary alto sax, Elizabeth Simmons clarinet, Sammy Kruger violin, and two students in the choir, Jacaleen Madison, who's also a finalist as a soloist, and Allison Duncan. There were several students who were chosen as alternates for the band and orchestra and they were Sydney Foster on trumpet, John Kemp on percussion, Mackenzie Ruddy on tuba, Erica Klabundi on violin, and Taylor Odakirk on violin. And I'm proud to say that of that list of students, at least six of those students were students that were in my elementary music classroom at one time or another and I'm sure Terry has had several of those students in her classroom as well. Are there any questions that you would ask me about the Metropolitan Opera program at this point?
I really like the guide that they provide you. This is very thorough.
It really is, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. I would like one myself.
Do the teachers use these before you go or afterwards?
Before, before. Yeah, the first opera was so early that it was mostly in my class and Terry's that we did it. As part of the Metropolitan Opera program, they actually sent me to New York to visit the Met and I got to visit with Peter Gelb, who is the general director, general manager of the Metropolitan Opera, got to meet Bartlett, or not Bartlett, one of the other directors of the production, got to meet one of the tenors that was singing in The Elixir of Love, and really had a nice chance to see what happens backstage and to talk in-depth about the operas. But yes, the plan is for me to take the materials to the teachers and have them integrate into their classrooms before they go.
Martha, a question about the quality. I've never seen an opera in a theater. Were you impressed with the picture and the sound?
Oh, it's very impressive. I have gone for a number of years to the live and HD broadcasts and so I knew that it was a quality experience. And yes, it is. It's just like being there. The sound is really quite good and the picture is so good. You have a different perspective because they do close-ups, whereas in the Metropolitan Opera, you might clear up in the fourth balcony and use your opera glasses, but yeah, it's very good. Anything else?
Martha, I just want to thank you very much and Terry as well, but for all you're doing and kind of getting the students exposed to some things that they wouldn't normally see and I know that's a lot of effort on your time and, but appreciate you also talking about your building principals and everybody else and the students as well. The article yesterday in the Courier was really just very positive about the student at East High, but also the other students' accomplishments as well, so you also feel very proud of that.
Thank you. And it does take all of that. It takes the parents and it takes the building administrators and the district administrators to help support all those efforts. Thanks a lot.
We thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you again.
I know, they have the pronunciations and everything in there. And the low down, I like that, the low down in each character.
Thank you again. All right, the next item on our agenda is Exhibit B on page two. This is the first of two items regarding Orange Elementary and they're both donations. Travis Elliott and Sharon Miller are here. Travis is lead teacher, assistant principal at Orange Elementary School. The first item on our agenda is a donation to Orange Elementary in honor of Robert and Joan Marsaw. It's for $3,000 and it's for the Media Center for the purchase of new books. The recommended motion is that the Board of Directors accepts and acknowledges a gift in the amount of $3,000 from the Marsaw family in honor of Robert and Joan Marsaw.
So moved.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion. And Travis, if you could, give us some background information on this.
Do I have to push right here?
The Marsaw family would like to donate.
The Marsaw family would like to donate $3,000 to Orange Elementary School in honor of Robert and Joan Marsaw. This donation will be for the Orange Elementary Media Center to purchase new library books. Robert and Joan Marsaw were lifetime residents of the Orange Township. They both graduated from Orange High School and their children and grandchildren attended Orange Elementary. Mrs. Marsaw volunteered in the Orange School Library for many years. Mrs. Marsaw passed away on August 14, 2007 and Mr. Marsaw passed away on September 4, 2012.
Thank you. And it's very kind of them. I know we have one person involved.
Yeah, I just have to definitely say many kudos to the whole Marsaw family. They've been integral in that Orange community for a long time and you know how much the family still is involved and right there in the neighborhood. So this is a really great thing to have a gift that will keep on giving.
Yeah, and just being new to Orange, a year ago, just the history and culture that they have going there, I've got to witness it firsthand by going to the South Brethren Church and seeing all the live history that actually happened. And then we actually had the Orange Alumni Reunion this year and that was just to sit there and go from person to person, to listen to the stories about when they were high schoolers and where they hid and what they did in the locker rooms and stuff like that. It was just, it was just amazing, you know, that, all the history that went on with that. Yes.
Well, thank you very much and please express our sincere gratitude to the family.
We will.
Any questions or further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Then the next item on our agenda is another donation to Orange Elementary. This is Exhibit C on page three. And this is from Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's a donation of $4,000 that was secured in large part because of an employee, it's Phone Imbatong, from, who I believe has a child at, or a niece, excuse me, at Orange Elementary. The recommended motion is that the Board of Directors accepts and acknowledges a gift in the amount of $4,000 from Wellmark and Phone Imbatong.
So moved.
Second. Second. Thank you. And discussion, Travis.
Wellmark would like to donate $4,000 to Orange Elementary School. We would like to take this money and use it for technology in the fifth grade classrooms. Right now, we're still in discussion on how that's going to be spent with Matt O'Brien. He's kind of given us some great direction. I think we're looking at purchasing some iPads with it for them to use in the fifth grade classrooms. But they donated $4,000 from Wellmark, for Wellmark employee Phone Imbatong. Wellmark encourages its employees to volunteer and give back to their communities, which she does, tons of giving back through their Blue Caregiving Program. Wellmark matches their employee donation to nonprofits up to $10,000 and Mrs. Imbatong has a niece, Alexis, who is an outstanding student. She's an outstanding leader in our school and she's a fifth grade student and that's why the donation's going to go to the fifth grade.
Very good.
Any questions or further discussion? If not, then again, please express our gratitude to Mrs. Imbatong and Wellmark as well. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again.
Thank you.
I didn't know about that.
And the next item on our agenda is another board celebration because this week is American Education Week. Sharon Miller and Deb Falls Graff are here to discuss this, but first I'll get the, before we get into the discussion of the activities for American Education Week, get the motion on the table and that motion is that the Board of Education express its appreciation to all the employees, volunteers, parents, students, and friends of the Waterloo Community Schools for the role each person plays in education and take this opportunity to recognize education support professionals and substitute teachers in particular for their valuable contribution to great public schools. The Board officially designates November 11th through the 17th, 2012, as American Education Week in the Waterloo Community School District.
So moved.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, Sharon and Deb.
This annual celebration calls attention to the roles that so many people play in making our public schools great, from teachers to parents, to custodians, to food service, to superintendents, and board members, and volunteers, parents. It really is all summed up in the theme. It is our basic right to have a great education, but it's also our responsibility to work together to make that education come to life.
And on behalf of the Waterloo Education Association, I would just like to give a huge thank you to all of the people that make our school system work and make education the best that it possibly can be for our students in Waterloo. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both and I know there are activities going on all week and I know the board has been busy. We'll actually be in Des Moines with the school board convention here for a great part of this week, but there's an awful lot going on throughout the community. And I go back to the opening ceremony we had and the speaker there and it talked about a lot of the themes we're discussing here with the American Education Week, that it takes a lot of people working together to make things work, but they work very, very well. So we're grateful to everybody. Any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. All right, we have now come to the time when those who wish may speak publicly to the board. I would like to remind each speaker, whether you represent yourself or a group, that you have three minutes to speak during this portion of the meeting. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I'll ask that you conclude your remarks immediately. Waterloo is a national leader in character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Throughout our meeting, we commit ourselves to these principles. At no time is it appropriate here to criticize the job performance of a specific employee of the district because personnel matters are confidential and they must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. So at this time, I'd invite anybody who wishes to address the board, please come forward, state your name and your address. Come on forward. Welcome. Just press the, is the green button, is that lit up?
My name's Elizabeth Smith and I live at 1634 Liberty Avenue in Waterloo and I was here four weeks ago to talk about the bus and the times it was here and I made some graphs to show the times it got here. Do you want me to bring those up?
And we'll make copies so the board members can see them after. Thank you. Just go ahead and pass them down.
You guys can keep that if you want.
Is it?
So on the back of the last page, there's percentages and they show like, I know one shows how many times it was early and one was if it was more than five minutes late and then another was if it was more than 10 minutes late. And it has how many times it was like that variable and the percentage of the whole day, the number of days it was applied to that.
And since you spoke to us four weeks ago, have things improved?
There's been times where it's been late, but then there's been times where it's actually been early and then it's been really close to exactly on time. But it's never been exactly on time, but it's been really close.
Well, thank you for coming back and making the report. I'm going to make sure the board members all get copies of it and one thing we can tell you is there's a lot of changes that have been going on out at the bus garage with the company that we contract with and the general thing we're hearing around the district is it's gradually getting better. So thank you for keeping us posted and coming back four weeks later. Really appreciate it.
I would also encourage you to continue to monitor and if there's more information you'd like to bring back to us, you're more than welcome to do so.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which tonight is the consent agenda and that includes three items. It's the minutes of our October 22 regular board meeting, October 29 special board meeting, which was an expulsion hearing, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last meeting, bills due and payable between board meetings. Those are the three. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed from the consent agenda? Then this is a first because we're not going to remove any. So any discussion on the consent agenda items?
Moved or approved.
Okay. All right, then we'll, moved and seconded. No discussion? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried and all the consent agenda items are approved. The next item on our agenda then is Exhibit H on page 24. This is concerning the student handbooks. And Mrs. Turner is here to discuss that and I know on our, at our desks here today were the student handbooks for our three high schools and then also for pre-K, elementary, and middle school. This is for information only, so Mrs. Turner, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. As stated, you have the handbooks for each high school, the Alternative Ed handbook and the K-8 handbook for our district. The information has been provided to parents. We have additional copies available in the building if, also, and we're in the process now of putting the handbooks up online so parents can also have the option to view them online. Going with technology to the future, that's something that we plan to pursue for the upcoming year to see if, another way to provide services to our parents. I will entertain any questions that you have at this time.
I'm sorry. How do you feel the usership is of these, like the high school east and west and?
On the high school level, they're really used because many times it's their ticket to be out in the hall for comments and information to parents. The larger handbooks for Alternative Ed and for K-8 are more stationary books at home for parents to seek out information. Often when they call my office, I will refer them to whatever page in the handbook as a follow-up and so that's been very helpful. But high school students really enjoy and you see them carrying their books quite often.
Cora, I just want to say, I know this is a ton of work to do these every year. This is, and that I think it's a great idea to have them online because it's just one more resource for parents and families, so.
I agree.
Way to go.
At the last year at the board meeting, you wanted me to make sure I go back and look at the high school books to make sure the information was contained and both were consistent. We did sit down and do that. It may not be in the same alphabetical order, but the information is very similar.
So did east and west each get to put their own meth, their own version together or?
They get to design their basic handbooks with additional information, but for district policies, procedures of the high school nature, they are similar.
So the identical information, they were just put together a little different?
Exactly.
Were the students involved in putting these together or was just something that was done per building?
I can't speak to you about the detail of the materials and provided in the book from the high schools. Maybe Willie can share that with us coming from the building?
Or if there's any feedback that you're getting back from kids as to what they liked about it, what they needed, what it didn't provide, just wondering if you're looking for feedback anyway.
When we met with students, with the student groups, we would take a look, if you look, West High and East has two different sizes. When we went to our students and our teachers, they requested that we maintain this current size. The new size is the size that West went to, which was a different one that we had gotten from the vendor and we chose to stay with the one versus the other. Throughout the year, I guess I'm not quite sure what you're looking for considering we're talking about policy on feedback from students as they find things that they want adjusted or needs to be adjusted throughout the year, we make some adjustments. The additions, I guess for feedback would be, if you look at the back of the two handbooks, the inserts would look different between the two buildings. So there is some feedback on the inserts on some of the resource pages that get entered into the handbooks as well. The students also at East High School create the cover each year as well, so.
So if eventually this is also available online, they will still be able to have the physical book?
Yes. Yes, they will.
And those handbooks, I believe that both buildings are available for parents to purchase additional ones if they would like as well.
That is correct.
The students are provided one free of charge the first time around. The students are provided one free of charge the first time around.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Thanks, Cora.
Cora, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda, and this is up for a vote, because it's the second reading. It's a Board policy change. It's Exhibit A on page 25. And this is regarding the policy, the present policy that's in place for job description for teachers. And it has changed in part just because of the way our policy is followed, especially, I think, changes regarding technology. But the recommended motion is that the Board approve the deletion of the following policy. Waterloo Community School District Job Description Teacher is Policy Number 405.1. Can we get that motion on the table?
I so moved.
Thank you. A second? All right, and again, this is the second reading. I don't think there's been any changes since the last, since our last Board meeting. Dr. Smith is available to answer any questions?
This is just to remind the Board that we have moved all of our job descriptions to the website, so.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our abbreviated agenda tonight. So for action items, our next item is in the superintendent's report, Dr. Norris.
And just in the interest of a good evening, I've narrowed my comments down from 45 minutes to 30. And I did, and the President knows he can give the signal to shut off my mic at any time. I do want to, I do wanted to just mention, thank you to our Board members that went with us to visit two different, actually almost three different high school type facilities this last week. On Monday, Mike Young and Mike Kinsey and I, along with some staff members, visited New Tech High School in Sioux Falls. Similar demographics in Sioux Falls to Waterloo. It's a community quite a bit alike. The high school that we saw was a project-based instruction high school with about 400 students. They were growing at 125, if I remember right, students a year roughly. So they had 375 this year, and they would be 400 or 500 next year. And they'd have seniors for the first time. It was not dissimilar to what Mike described that they saw in San Diego in terms of project-based instruction. And if you want to jump in, Mike, I did hear you say that they did a lot more building and a lot more working with their hands in San Diego, whereas this project base were more academic projects that they were actually doing on paper, pencil, and computer, things like that.
Yeah, it was, it was a different fit for what they were doing. San Diego, I think, has 10 or 11 years invested in this. So they've cleaned up a lot of the issues, and they're well-established. I think some of those schools we've visited are more at the infant stage, if anything, or toddler, you know, to where they're getting things implemented, learning on the go, and getting a lot of support from around the country, from different groups that are doing the same kinds of things. So I think it's got a lot of good information, more than I was expecting. I've been enlightened on quite a few different aspects of education in general, not to mention high school education. But where do we go from here? Is it, is it ninth graders, or is it all the way back to sixth graders? You know, because there's quite a leap from fifth to sixth grade. And if we can catch some of the kids that maybe lose interest at that stage, we can keep them around and more able to learn at a quicker pace, keep up, you know, so.
After we visited the New Tech High School, that we then went over for a quick tour of their, what they called their CTE Center, Career and Tech Ed Center. And that would be quite a bit more like the schools that Jane's going to go visit in Wilmington, Delaware. Willie's been there, Lyle's been there. And they were actually working on programs like graphic design, or they were working on broadcast journalism, or automotive. They, they were building two full-size houses inside of a building. Just incredible. And.
It looked like a hangar.
Yeah. And the doors at the end of the time, we were saying, do you have to disassemble these in part to get them out of here? And she pointed to the doors on the hangar that they, in the spring, when the houses are built, they just move the houses right out of it. So anyway, it was neat to see the opportunities kids were having to.
Integrating the education with community college in the area, other technical institutes to where you both get dual-credit courses, plus you can go beyond that and get full college credit classes during your senior year if you've completed other portions of your education. So there are some cost issues with some students, because they do not, they may actually charge for some of the college classes. So there are, there are some issues to deal with when you're dealing with high school students, so. It's a good experience.
And then on Tuesday, I visited with Sue Flynn, Jackie Singley Academy in Irving, Texas. Irving, Texas, at least that school, which we were told was representative of their whole district, has a minority population of about 90%. Most of those are Hispanic. And we, the school was divided up into six general career fields with four to five career areas within each field. So kids really were getting, and they're not kids, they're young men and young women, were getting just an outstanding picture of what it would take to work in that career area. And they were getting, in many cases, certification to do so. Late in, and I'll let Sue jump in here in a second. Late in the day, we, it was probably about 5 o'clock, we ran them by the sixth-floor museum where Lee Harvey Oswald pulled the trigger. So that was eye-opening thing, too. Sue, any comment?
No, it just was a very good experience, just to see the academies in full action and fully developed, and it was a beautiful school. The concept of the school was just, and it was, I found it very interesting. I know Deb went, too, on our trip. But that the school was built in like a very elite neighborhood. I mean, extremely wealthy neighborhood. And most of the students that went there did not reside anywhere around there at all. And just the, the energy that the kids that we talked to, and even just in the rooms, the technology that they used was, but just to see the academies and a lot of these kids going to come out with, you know, CNAs and culinary certificates, and it just, it was very impressive.
And Sue's right, the engagement was very high. You almost didn't walk into a room where people weren't with the program and getting so. Anyway, I just want to thank Board members for going to see that. And I know we're going to be hearing more complete reports at our high school task force. And then at some point, the high school task force, it's going to be now after the holidays, but the high school task force will come together and say, look, it looks like that this and this model are ones we ought to study further. So we're, I'm feeling good that all of the people are getting a really good, there's nothing like seeing it and being there for a whole day. And so that's, so thank you, Mike.
Well, thank you, Dr. Norris. Yeah, I think all the visits have been helpful, and it'll be interesting to see how all the information comes in. I think everybody will make an informed decision. Now, we've come to time to hear from Board members. And I'll start, maybe on this side, Mike Kinsey. Any report?
Nothing for School Board, just would like to acknowledge veterans, both current and past. This day was, yesterday was actually the day, but I think a lot of those people got the day off today because it was Sunday. But just wanted to say that I thought about them today, and I hope a lot of other people did as well. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mike. And Andrea Sparks.
Well, I just want to thank all the students in the Waterloo school system for donating clothing and toys for the victims of Hurricane and Tropical Storm Sandy out east. And I think that made that a very successful drive for, that was sponsored by the Durham Bus Services that we have. I think that was wonderful. I heard a whole bus full of donations were heading out that way from Waterloo area. But that was, that was a good expression of citizenship, helping each other.
Yeah, it was nice to hear. Thank you, Andrea. And Bernice Richard.
I want to again congratulate our students for their placing in Allstate from our two high schools. And I went with Debbie Lee and Dan Cox last week to Chicago to visit two, they call them college middle schools. And one, Truman, was downtown in the loop. And the other one was way outside of Chicago. And they both, I thought about our Expo High School, because I thought that this could be a model we could use. And the thing, unique thing about these two schools were, they were right there in the building with the community college. So, and they, you know, had a lot of dual enrollment students, and they offered some programming that I think we probably need to look at. And I, being a School Board member, I advised Debbie Lee to write up the report and present it. Present it to the, committed, right. I delegated that to her. And we took lots of pictures, too.
Thank you, Bernice. Sue Flynn.
Well, and I just wanted to thank all of our district administration during this education, focus on education. I think we always look at the teachers and we look at the principals. And, but our administrators, Gary and Jane and Willie here tonight, and Bev, and just, I really appreciate you guys getting in the schools and the school visits. I think that's critical and very important, and I just want to give you kudos for doing that. And I think it making, is making a big impact on the cultures in the schools. So I just want to offer that. And then, just on a side note with the veterans, I live very close to West High, and this morning I heard all this chattering outside my door, and I thought, oh, there's a fight, you know. And I looked out, and here were the students placing flags up and down Baltimore for the Veterans Day ceremony. So whoever put that together at West High, excellent job. And those kids, they were just massive kids, and they were just having a good time putting those flags out. So, thank you, veterans.
Thank you, Sue. And Shanley McNally.
I'm going to be the third one. It's always the third time's the charm that you get to talk about. But as a proud band mommy, I actually had somebody who tried out for Allstate. But this article that Andrew wrote yesterday in The Courier was awesome. So if anybody wants to know more about the Allstate program, and it is pretty amazing that both our high schools had people go. And then I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving next week. It's a time of year to be thankful for all the things we have here in Waterloo. So that's it.
Thank you, Shanley. And Lyle Schmidt could not attend tonight, he's traveling. But he wanted to make a note about Godspell, to give credit to especially the East High students and the staff, and also I think there was a lot of collaboration with West High as well, with Mr. Penning.
Brian Penning, yeah.
That the production of Godspell. Unfortunately, I was not able to see it, but I've heard nothing but great things about it. So congratulations to everybody associated with that. Our, everything else that's been said in honoring veterans on Veteran Day and also American Education Week, that is important just to tell everybody involved at our schools, thank you for what they do. And then, lastly, it pains me to say this, but I have to congratulate the Kansas State Wildcats. Dr. Norris' alma mater for, well, to be the best, you have to be the best.
It took a big man to say that, mister.
My D C U Horned Frogs on Saturday, and a painfully, just a painful game. But congratulations, they're number one for a reason. And there's always next year, so. But.
I was going to ask you off to go to the national championship game.
Oh, it was painful. It was painful. But to everybody, happy Thanksgiving. And with that, our next meeting is in two weeks. It's on the Monday right after Thanksgiving, on November 26th, at 6:00 PM here in this room. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried, we adjourn. Thank you all. Yeah, it was tough. It was, it was awful. Yeah, I watched it alone.